Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, April 28th. It is 7:01 P. M. This is a regular meeting of the town council. Will everyone rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The following town council members are present in chambers. Persko Kohut, Maurer Lapelis, Forma Kella O'Rourke. The following town council members are absent. Duba and Wales. Mr. First Selectman, can you check if Mr. Reed is in the waiting room?
Don't have him at this point in time, sir.
All right. So when he appears, so I'll mark Mr. Reed as absent for now. And when he appears, I will mark the time. We have another brief item on our agenda this evening. Before we move over to the consent calendar, we have the presentation of an award. Mr. First Selectman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As many of you might remember, last year, our Miss U.S., Miss President U.S. from Monroe, Margot Solanska, won the award. Well, it looks like she won it again this year. She is an overachiever of overachievers, and I'd like to have her walk up and receive this certificate of commendation. Are you ready, Margot?
Ready.
We know each other now. She comes up to me in the park, tells me, "Clean up the trash." I, you know, I don't know who's tougher on me, a taxpayer or Margot, but I'll take it. Okay, so Margot, this is a commendation to you. You are commended and congratulating on achieving Miss President U.S. from Monroe, Connecticut, for the second time. This achievement reflects your outstanding leadership, confident public speaking, and thoughtful presentation on the important topic of recycling and cyber safety. Miss President U.S. inspires and empowers young girls to reach for the highest levels of civic leadership by also building the values and qualities of tomorrow's leaders, and you've truly embodied all of that. Your previous win for your impactful plan on recycling and cleaning up Monroe showed your creativity, initiative, and passion for making a difference. Your ideas and enthusiasm are all qualities that made you a great candidate for this award two times. Congratulations once again, Margot Solanska, and we can't wait to see where your leadership takes you next. Signed by this really, really nice guy. Congratulations. Okay. I did, just so you know, her name is spelt wrong, and I corrected it, so we'll get another commendation for her, so you can come to my office during the week and grab that. But in the meantime, I'll give it to you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Carrie, if you could just let Kevin.
Sure.
It is 7:05.
Mr. Reed is now in.
Thanks.
Yep. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
All right, great. Thanks. Oh, no, you guys disappeared, though. Oh, there you are. All right.
Magic trick. Moving on to item three, our consent calendar. Without objection, I'm going to pass consent calendar presented. Very none on passing consent calendar as presented. I S I Communication Items A through P being incorporated into the minutes of our meeting. Moving on to item five, public participation. Is there any member of the public that would like to participate tonight? Not seeing anyone here. First Selectman Rooney, is there anyone raising their hand in the chat that would like to participate?
No, sir.
All right.
At this point in time.
Oh, just a note. I had received, at our last meeting, there was a question, I think Jason, you asked it regarding the link, the Zoom link meeting. The new system still uses the same link, so it's not a different application. It is the Zoom link. I did, Carrie, First Selectman Rooney's assistant, inform me of that, and I'm just going to pass that along. That's, it's the same link, it's the same Zoom. It shows there are additional security features that are now in place to prevent the...
Zoom button.
Right, the Zoom button. Yeah. All right. Bless you. There be no public participation this evening. We move on to appointments. We have one appointment this evening. All right, I move that Town Council adopt Resolution 25 dash zero five four, resolve that the Monroe Town Council hereby approves the first selectman's appointment of Kristen Penna to the Economic Development Commission for term ending January 20th, 2027. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chair Lapelis. Kristen and her family moved from New York to Monroe in 2020. Her career in the fashion industry spanned over 30 years, where she was designed for well-known brands such as DKNY and Calvin Klein. Her extensive background is in graphic design. She's currently a real estate agent for Keller Williams. Kristen has quickly become involved in her community, volunteering at Stephanie Elementary School, as well as her daughter's dance studio. She assists with backstage coordination, performances, and competitions, as well as helping to organize fundraising events. Some of her interests are gardening and landscape design, as well as interior design and decor. She believes that sustainable, well-planned development is key to fostering a vibrant local economy while preserving the charm that makes Monroe special. With Kristen's work in volunteerism, she has developed an eye for detail and understanding of market strategy, which will be beneficial to the Economic Development Commission. This appointment fills a vacancy of James Goldstein. Any other discussion on this item? I hear none.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just one item that I want to put out. My understanding is that Kristen was originally recommended to the selectmen for a different committee from the Democrat Vacancy Committee, and the selectmen felt that she was a better fit for the Economic Development Commission, which I have no problem with. Our, my understanding, though, is that she was told that she needed to switch parties in order to get that appointment.
Completely false.
If, I don't...
I'll tell you. I mean...
One at a time. Hold on. Jason, was there anything else?
Yeah, I'll just put out that I think it's important to note that there's no such thing as R seats and D seats on these commissions. There's only a provision of our charter that allows only up to a certain number of seats to be a specific party within one commission. Somebody could be an R, independent, or Democrat, or an unaffiliated. It doesn't really matter which one, and they can be appointed to any of the commissions, regardless of how many people are on there, so long as it doesn't go past that max. So I just think it's a dangerous precedent of setting that one person has to be a specific party to be appointed to a seat, because that is the party of the person who left, and they're trying to fill that seat when it, I just as a, I don't think that's a precedent.
If I can shed some light...
Of course.
Yeah, she was sent in as a Democrat. She sat with us, and she had a very outgoing personality. To me, I think it's very important that we place people in areas where they can be useful. When I see certain skill levels, I want to place them where they'll be happy, because if they go on a board that they're not happy, then we lose them, right? So I said, "I'd really like to see you on economic development," because I think, based on the conversations I was having with her, that's where she kind of wanted to be. So at that time, I called the town clerk, and I asked, "Vita, is there a seat available for her?" Because she's a Democrat, we've historically honored those seats, right? So you're not wrong, but we have historically honored, because if we put a Republican in a Democrat seat, you know, there might be an argument there. So we, historically, we recognize the previous, the political background of the previous person in that position. That being said, she said that she wasn't entirely committed, so I want you to understand, when she first came to us, she wasn't affiliated with any party. Are you aware of that?
Yes. She was unaffiliated.
All right, all right.
Yes.
She didn't have an affiliation at all.
Right, unaffiliated.
So she came in, and she looked at me, and she said, "Well, if I have to move to Republican to go there, I'd gladly do that." I said, "People make decisions on their party based on their personal beliefs. That's entirely up to you." She made that personal choice to do that.
And like I said, I have, I support, it doesn't change her qualifications. I agree with you wholeheartedly that if there's a better place to put somebody, and they are, and they want to do that, we should do that. I just think it also needs to be, instead of being made aware that this was a seat for this person, it should be made aware of, I will, it should be made aware of, "I will appoint you to this regardless of what party you are," either Democrat or Republican.
That was a conversation completely by that candidate. There was no suggestion either way. You make a decision what you'd like to do, and that's how that worked.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And call for a vote. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 25 dash zero five four, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none passes seven to zero. Moving on to new action items. Item A, Town Council Committee on Finance, Education, Health, Public Safety Matters.
We've not had a meeting in a while.
Thank you very much. Item B, Town Council Committee on Planning, Zoning, Public Works, and Park and Recreation Matters. Councilmember O'Rourke.
We have not met since our last meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item C, Town Council Committee on Legislative and Administrative Matters. Thank you very much for coming. Thank you.
We never expect people to stay.
He's able to talk, so...
Okay. I'm not hearing Councilmember Reed, but because, in the first, I will let everybody know, we met this evening before Town Council at 6:30. We reviewed the items on our agenda, 049, 25 dash 049, 25 dash 050, 25 dash 051, 25 dash 052, 25 dash 053, as well as 25 dash 055, 25 dash 056, and 25 dash 07. All of these items reached consensus to come to Town Council, and there was one question regarding the Last Mile Racing LLC from Councilmember Maurer, who asked the source of the funding for the expenses related to that, and those would be covered through the generous donation of New Town Savings Bank related to Memorial Day parade committee, and that is the report from LNA. Moving on to item D.
Mr. Chair, I just, for a correction, on the record for, when they're typing up the notes, I believe you said 25 dash 07 for the last one, and it's 25 dash 057.
Yes, 25 dash 057. Okay. And moving on to item D, Strategic Planning Committee. We have not met since our last Town Council meeting, however, since our Town Council meeting was approximately three weeks ago, there was an update related to the facilities, the Ad Hoc Facilities Committee related to the Board of Education Facility Study meeting. It was determined at that meeting that the preference of the committee, even though there are only three voting members, but every advisory member had an opportunity to express a preference for one of two options, either Option B or Option F, with, there was, I think, unanimous support for Option B if having to choose between the two plans, which would leave Monroe Elementary still operational. I think that was kind of the strength of that option for a lot of people. It was also related to the designation of which groupings of students was most appropriate and age appropriate. There were also some consideration given to the alternative school, as well as a younger kid program, I believe, pre-K program, as well was part of that decision. Now, what does that mean, big picture? Well, the three voting members, which were the three members of the Board of Education on the Ad Hoc Facility Team, voted to endorse Option B, and then that they would move it to the Board of Education for further discussion. And so I believe the Board of Education is currently deliberating and gathering information on that. As well as at that meeting, there was a discussion as to the timeline. There had been some support amongst the committee from a couple of members that wanted to apply for state assistance this calendar year to begin the building of one of the projects. I believe their preferred option was a renovation of Chalk Hill School. However, I believe the majority of advisement on the committee say that there was going to be more due diligence done, I think, by all our boards and commissions, Town Council, Board of Finance, Board of Education, about the appropriate way to move forward and getting all relevant documentation together. Now, that doesn't come without risks. Some of the risks that were acknowledged were that, you know, we don't know what the state reimbursement rate will be next year, and that is certainly something to consider. But I think that the collective thought process was that it would be better to move forward with our town process in a more educated way, where, you know, more due diligence has been done at this time than when we would have to apply in June of this year if that first, that more accelerated option was selected. And so, going forward, the committee will stay together and continue to meet, to come up with an extended planning process for all of the buildings that are under the purview of the Board of Education, and come up with a 10 to 15 to 20-year strategy about addressing space needs for Board of Education. So that is the plan going forward at this time, and I believe there is a meeting, just check my calendar, I believe the 8th of May is our next meeting. If it is before then, I will let everyone know, and if you have a question, I can pass it along. But that is the update for Strategic Planning Committee from the Facilities Ad Hoc Committee. Additionally, I will be reaching out to Chairwoman, Party of the Historic District, Historic Society. I always screw up those two names, but about meaning regarding the variously property. So as soon as I get that information, I'll reach out to our Strategic Planning Committee members. All right?
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Just to thank you to the Ad Hoc Committee, there's, that's been a really big process going on, and just the recognition of the committee to slow down when they needed to slow down, to take in public comment, and recognize when maybe there was some voices in town that needed to be heard, and not only taking the time to hear those voices, but seeking out those voices. I just want to pass my thanks along to yourself and that committee, because I think that was a really important step to make sure that the people who were reaching out were, all had a true chance for their voices and their opinions to be heard.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jason, for that sentiment. I mean, what I will say is, going forward, whatever happens with any of the facilities decisions for the Board of Education, people will continue to have a voice for that, because it is, it is a multi-generational investment, no matter what we do. You know, it's millions and millions and millions of dollars, if not hundreds of millions of dollars. So it will have a tremendous impact on multiple generations of people. So we will, my hope is for the committee to continue to receive input, and then if any of these decisions get moved on to, you know, here at Town Council, the Board of Finance, or some building committee, that there be additional opportunities for our community to be heard and considered for that. All right. Moving on to E, our Open Space Preservation and Acquisition Committee. Councilmember O'Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have not met since our last meeting.
Thank you very much. And item F, our first selectman's update. First Selectman Rooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Operations, you know, the referendum, the budget referendum is next week, on May 6th, 2025. The polling location is at the Community Center site, 707 Monroe Turnpike, from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Grosso Project Settlement. Thank you to this council for unanimously voting and approval for my office to handle this matter. As there are many moving parts on this matter, a settlement has been reached and is moving forward to completion. This project, as we know, had many challenges, including but not limited to utility marketing inconsistencies, product availability during COVID, and financial impacts such as material increases during COVID as well. I would like to state my appreciation to the Grosso Company for working with this office after I reached out requesting this situation be resolved immediately. I will update this council moving forward. However, I speak for many of us that we are very happy to see closure to this project, that despite all the challenges, had a positive end result on Pepper Street. The Highway Union Contract. After many meetings and collaboration, I'm happy to announce the town and highway union have come to agreement, and they have signed a new contract. The Department of Public Works is a vital service in Monroe, and many of the Highway Department employees live in town who have a high level of service to keep Monroe a great place to live. This new five-year contract has the union higher wages compared to surrounding towns. Emergency Services Update. License Plate Readers. The Police Department recently partnered with Flock Safety to install automatic plate readers to reduce crime. Many violations are committed using motor vehicle, and these readers will help aid in finding stolen cars, hit-and-run collisions, and missing person cases. The cameras are not for speed of the car, but for more serious offenses, this system will help reduce crime in a timelier manner. Community Update. Miss President U.S., congratulations to Margot Solanska for winning Miss President U.S. again, the first earned, she first earned the title for her outstanding ideas in recycling, and now for cyber safety. As we all know, these are vital topics to focus on. We look forward to what you have planned next. Spring Fling at the Library. I attended the Spring Fling at the library with a special visit from the Easter Bunny. Fun was had by all, and thank you to the library for putting so many events together for the community. Arbor Day today. We recognized Arbor Day. Thank you to Town Clerk's Office for donating this year's tree, and thank you to Parks and Recreation for hosting the event. This is the 21st year of Monroe being a Tree City, USA, committee. Grants. MetroCog Micro Grant. We received a $5,000 micro grant award through the Connecticut Department of Transportation Active Transport Micro Grant Program for bicycle racks and bicycles. The bicycles will be distributed at our annual Monroe Night at the Park, put on by our police department. The town is thrilled to have received this generous grant. It will bring even more excitement and energy to the Monroe Night at the Park. Also combined in this, I believe it's seven or eight bicycle racks that will be put around town. Just a couple of things that weren't on here that I want to mention. The Community Center site, we did, we now have run the conduit to the building. We have the data company coming to pull everything through, so we will have internet access that should be live within the next week or so. So that's, we are moving forward with that. Also, the RFP is out for the wall. We have received bids from multiple companies to repair the wall on the gym wall. So it looks like the prices are coming in a little bit less than we anticipated, which is always fantastic news, but I'll keep you updated on that. Also, just one thing I do want to mention, because this is somewhat local to us, Jay Picorillo, the owner of Michelizzi's Ice, has passed away. Many of us do know him. He donated time and Italian ice to many of the events in the park for years and years. Jay was a really large community figure in the North End of Bridgeport, and he was involved in Monroe events many, many times, and I don't know anybody that didn't like or won't like Michelizzi's Ice, so rest in peace, Jay. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair? Councilmember Maurer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, with the idea of giving credit where, credit to just two items, one for you, Mr. Selectman, on the Grosso settlement, as well as a couple of other items where I know you were overseas, and you weren't even here, but you made sure to make yourself available and to make sure to still help out when called upon, so I just want to say thanks for that.
It was 3 o'clock in the morning for me, one of them.
But especially the settlement. This is, the Pepper Street project has been a long, long time coming, as we all know, so to finally see things coming to a close there is just great. Also, our Parks and Rec, I was fortunate enough to be able to attend. They did the egg hunt at Webb Mountain at the Discovery area of the Webb Mountain, and it was the first time I've ever been to that, and it's a great event. They do painted wooden eggs that the kids get to keep. There was a bird demonstration, and just those kind of events in our town for our, the members of our community are just wonderful to see. So kudos to our Parks and Rec Department for that event.
All right. Moving on to unfinished business. We have no matters of unfinished business this evening. Moving on to item A, Resolution 25 dash zero five five. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 25 dash zero five five, resolve that Terrence P. Rooney, first selectman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe the Administrative Services Agreement and any associated documents binding between the Progressive Benefit Solutions for the Cafeteria 125 Administrative Services Agreement.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Standing by Jason Maurer. Mr. First Selectman, discussion?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Human Resources Department currently manages an ongoing relationship with Progressive Benefit Solutions, PBS, for the purpose of administering a cafeteria plan under Section 125 of the IRS Code. The specific benefit provided is a health reimbursement arrangement, HRA, and/or health savings account, HSA, and/or qualified transportation account, QTA, program of benefits to eligible employees and their qualified dependents on a pre-tax basis. PBS has provided their updated standard agreement, which is provided for your review. This agreement has been reviewed by our town attorney, who provided an attaching opinion letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 25 dash zero five five, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Passes seven to zero. Moving on to B, Resolution 25 dash zero five six. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 25 dash zero five six, resolve Terrence P. Rooney, first selectman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe the Transparent Language Incorporated contract and any associated documents binding between Transparent Language Incorporated for the Edith Wheeler Memorial Library Language Learning Database.
And Q, is there a second?
Second.
Standing by Jason Maurer. Mr. First Selectman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Edith Wheeler Memorial Library would like to utilize Transparent Language Incorporated for the library's language learning services. The library would like to change language learning databases from their current vendor, Margot Languages, to Transparent Language, which would be a savings of $588 per year. This matter has been reviewed by our town attorney, who provided an opinion letter. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any questions regarding this item? All right. Call for vote. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 25 dash zero five six, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Passes seven to zero. Moving on to item C, Resolution 25 dash zero five seven. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 25 dash zero five seven, resolve that Terrence P. Rooney, first selectman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe the EMS Billing Services Contract and any associated documents binding between Griffin Health Services Corporation for EMS Billing Services.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Standing by Councilmember Maurer and Mr. First Select.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Earlier this year, the town issued a request for proposals, RFP, for the EMS Billing Services Contract. Five bids were received, one of which was determined to be acceptable by our EMS chief. Included for your review and consideration is the contract which incorporates the RFP document proposal as submitted. This matter has been reviewed by the town attorney, who has provided his attached letter of opinion. I just wanted to add that this is a long time coming. Since I was first in office, chief and I have had many meetings about this and our concerns with our billing structure. I think this is a really strong move for us. We definitely needed this to happen, and I hope that the company that you chose does a fantastic job. I trust your decision-making, and that's all I have. Obviously, the chief is here to answer any questions, if there are any. Thank you.
Craig, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I can't.
Ah, yeah, just so you're picked up by the microphone. Sorry.
I feel really good.
I feel really good about this company. The client is their local, they're also a nonprofit. Their goal is to serve regional EMS providers. You know, in contrast, all the other bids we got, you know, there were a couple in Connecticut, their top facilities area, we had some in Texas, we had our current company, which is global. What we're really struggling with, if our current company is lack of quality, first bill errors, missed bills, and really just excessive hours for our team, and also the Board of Finance, the finance leader, sorry, to manage them, you know, to follow up and review and double-check. Feel really good that they know us. Actually, the leader of this company used to be at our prior company years ago, when they were very good, and since then acquired and all that. So she knows us, she knows the area. These are very competitive, and so really, no concerns at all at our end. So we would be live at this July 1st, is when the current contract ends. So.
Thank you, Craig. Any other discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 25 dash zero five seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes seven to zero. We have no unfinished matters of new business. We have no unfinished matters of finished business. There is no second public participation this evening, but I am adjourning this meeting at 7:33 p.m. Thank you, everyone.